So I'm gonna start reading emails. First one. Please, everyone. Thank you. "Council members, my name is Adam and on April 10th I started working in the DPW for Hamtramck. I have never fallen in love with a job in a city like I have for Hamtramck. I would like to thank all of the council members, Max and John DeAngelis, for making the city such a great place to work and commend you all for striving to improve and make this a great city, make this great city flourish." Adam Van Toyle? Is that how you pronounce it? Van Toyle? Uh, this is Per Espera. "If you think flying a pride flag is special treatment then you do not deserve a position in public office. You are either cowards bowing to fascist intimidation or you're bigots who wish to push the LGBT community back into silence and shame. I hope that some of you have the spine to do what's right for marginalized groups of people who are currently under attack by far-right maniacs that paint us as dangerous sex criminals. How far are you willing to let them go?" I have Jacob and Allison Frizzle. They sent the exact same emails. I believe they're husband and wife, so I'll just read one of them. "I want to voice my vehement opposition to Resolution 2382. The pride flag represents love, acceptance, and inclusion. These are cornerstone ideas, ideals to have any community as diverse as Hamtramck and the ones we should celebrate not hide. Allowing the pride flag to fly does not open the doors to hateful extremist racist or homophobic flags. Rather, it is a message that all people are welcome and valued in this community and that those types of exclusionary principles are not represented by city leadership. I beg that you vote against a resolution that would aim to silence the progress made by a long-targeted and marginalized group. The majority of Hamtramck citizens know what it's like to be part of such groups and the damage that is done by acts like these. Thank you for your consideration." Andy Hunt. "The only flags that need to be banned are the Confederate flag and the Nazi flag. The meaning of the pride flag is the exact opposite of the previous mention. What the hell are you thinking, all thinking?" Soren Hodder. "Good evening. I hope this email finds you all well. I'm writing with great concerns regarding the unsupposed inability to recognize the difference between flying a flag of a radical or racist organization and flying flags that show solidarity and respect for groups and parts of the diversity of Hamtramck. This idea that the city of Hamtramck has to remove all flags from public buildings that are not the American flag, national flags, POW flags, or the flag of the city Hamtramck is not conducive to the indicated aim of both neutrality and city unity. It is easy for there to be a process called where flying a flag is approved by the appropriate boards and committees while also maintaining good order and neutrality when it comes to diverse and racist entities that ask for their flag to be flown. Resolution 2382 says that the people of various religious groups, ethnicities, and sexual orientation groups are represented by the flag of their nation. I don't think that we can logically agree that this is true. There are 417 anti-LGBT+ pieces of state legislation that are being considered at this moment in this country. You are twice as likely to be murdered by the police if you are black than if you are white in this country. Where is the representation of ethnicity and of sexual orientation in the American flag? Flying a flag for a specific group is much more than just putting the flag up and singling it out." That group of people, it is, singling out that group of people. It is about highlighting that the group of people are supported and loved by their government. It is about visibility, is about much more than just the flag flying. It is about the 38 people who were murdered last year for not conforming to their assigned gender at birth. It is about the unity and recognition of uplifting those voices. Choosing to not fly a flag due to the fear of a slippery slope towards radical and racist groups asking for their flags to be flown is not the answer in the face of bigotry and state-sanctioned violence across the world. The opportunity exists here to ensure that Hamtramck remains a welcoming and open place for people of all ethnicities, of all sexual orientations, of all religions. Choosing to avoid the opportunity to say no to racist groups is detrimental to the unity and good order of the city of Hamtramck. Thank you for reading." Catherine Fasco. "My name is Catherine Fasco and I regularly participate in activities, classes, and contribute economically, at least on weekly, often more basis, to the Hamtramck economy. I'm extremely disturbed by hearing of the resolution that will be up for discussion pertaining to the banning of LGBTQ+ pride flags. As a member of the LGBTQ community and a frequent patron of the city of Hamtramck and its businesses, I am horrified, offended, and extremely angered by this. Every human deserves to feel safe, not only where they live but everywhere they go. How many of your residents do you wish to see targeted by the anti-LGBTQ+ bigotry? How many hate crimes do you want to encourage because this is exactly what you are doing with this? This is absolutely infringing on your residents' First Amendment rights on top of discriminating against an already-targeted community. Stop persecuting the LGBTQ+ community under the guise of inclusion. You aren't fooling anyone. Sincerely, Catherine Fasco." Sean Bazink. "Hi there. I have been a Hamtramck resident for over half a decade now and I have loved living in such diverse and welcoming community. By banning this flag, you spit on every idea, you spit on the very idea of tolerance and acceptance. I'm going to keep this short because I think if you are small-minded enough to enact this change, you aren't going to be willing to listen to any reason anyway. Just know that people like me see through your bigotry and I'll encourage whoever I can to vote you out on the next election." I will. Oh, definitely, I'll let you know. Sage Sherlock. "Hello, I think I would be, it would be horrible not, not only for our immediate community but also for the national eye of the wonderful city of Hamtramck, ban, to ban the pride flag. That's backwards. Y'all don't know, y'all don't want to do that. Do you know how many lawsuits you would have on your hands? Also, it would really send a message that the city is not a safe place for queer people. Don't go down the bigoted road. You're better than that." This is from Jen Cecil. "To whom it may concern, I'm writing this email to share my perspective on Resolution 2382. As a frequent international visitor of your city, Hamtramck, I'm from a small town in Ontario, Canada. It was over a year ago that I was first introduced to Hamtramck. Friends brought me to a soccer match at Keyworth Stadium and I'll be honest, I knew nothing about soccer at the time. Yet I immediately felt a new world open up to me and it wasn't the sport that drew me in, it was the community, your community. Since then, I've been, I've made dozens of trips to Hamtramck and this year I even purchased season tickets to DCFC for both me and my best friend. We like to meet up with our other friends at Folding Warehouse before DCFC matches, shop at the merch tents, and enjoy food from one of the many food trucks at Keyworth Stadium. Sometimes we find somewhere nearby, like the Painted Lady Lounge, to grab a drink or a bite to eat with friends after. What made this community so special to me was feeling safe. What told me I was safe was seeing pride flags like the ones in Keyworth Stadium or Zussman Park. It let me know that I was sharing space with people who were ready and willing to see me, include me, and stand up for me in the face of hatred or opposition. For the first time in my life, I could stand in a crowd and not hide. I could meet new people and make friends as my true self, a queer, asexual woman who just wants to love and be loved, the same as everybody else. Cities all over the US have pride flags hanging on street poles and parks, schools, and other publicly-owned properties and that attracts visitors like me and my friends. It makes me feel safe to visit. It tells me the majority of the individuals voting on matters such as this have the courage and willingness to stand against exclusionary and hateful vitriol that hemophobia and transphobia are comprised of and often lends itself to other issues like racism, sexism, xenophobia. Seeing pride flags on publicly-owned spaces makes me want to celebrate those cities as safe, inclusionary, and welcoming to people from all walks of life. Hamtramck happens to be the one I visit and celebrate most frequently on an almost weekly basis. Hamtramck's acceptance and inclusionary standards are and have been very much so part of our international character and I ask that you vote accordingly. Please vote against the resolution, vote against what it stands for and the harmful message it will send to your residents and your visitors. If you are neutral in situations of injustice, this is a quote, 'you have chosen the side of the oppressor.'" Thank you, Jen C. Norman Rothwell. "Norm Rothwell. While I am not currently resident of the, of your fair city, is an area I'm strongly considering buying a house in over the next few, couple years. I spend a lot of time in Hamtramck right now, mainly attending DCFC matches. Like you say in your statement regarding this resolution, Hamtramck is a city that seeks to embrace diversity, that includes people from all walks of life. As a queer person myself, I can assure that, assure you that this is the way I was born. I spent a lot of time dealing with family and friends who told me that being queer is not okay, that it's a sin against God. This did not make me any less queer. Being queer is not a choice, is how I was born. Seeing pride flags flown in our city tells me that this is a place I can feel welcome and safe in. To ban pride flag would do exactly the opposite of what you claim to do in seeking out diversity and inclusion in our city. And if it is indeed symbols of hate that you are worried about flooding your city, focus on removing symbols that represent the hate and not the symbols that represent love and inclusion. You do not fight hate by denouncing love. It is only through embracing love and understanding that you can eradicate hate. So I ask you to embrace said love so that people like myself can continue to feel welcomed in your city and you can further add that to your diversity." Thank you, Norm Rothwell. Dustin Bowie. "I would like to submit public comment in regards to Hamtramck not wanting to open the doors for radical racist groups asking to fly their flags by denying the ability to fly the pride flag implies that the city believes that the LGBTQ+ community is on the same level as the radical or racist groups. The city seems to want to, want the authority to deny specific flags and if it were to exercise that power, I believe it should do so on ones that stem from hatred and prejudice instead of inclusiveness and diversity. Denying the pride flag, a flag of love and inclusiveness, would set an uninviting tone across the city. Please don't shrink the duty of handling radical and racist groups by throwing a handle-all blanket over every group. It is the entire community's job to oust hatred and create a welcoming environment." Will Shulak. "I am a regular patron of Hamtramck Business and is an establishment and this new resolution is absolutely sickening. It's very obvious that this new law stems out of homophobia and hatred. I sincerely hope that you know how many people you will negatively impact by your blind hatred and bigotry. Best, Will Shulak." Anton Filjayev. "I recently saw that there was a resolution trying to ban the pride flags from public places in Hamtramck. Please don't ban the pride flag from public places. It really makes the city a beacon for diverse, diverse thought and helping art thrive here. I moved here five years ago in 2018 because I'm a musician and producer who played often here in Hamtramck and since 2019 I have owned a house on Klinger. I love the diversity and artist community that lived here and has always been a staple of Hamtramck. I am proud, I am a proud first-generation Ukrainian immigrant as well as being bisexual therefore a member of the LGBT community. Hamtramck has always had a rich artist community which often includes many members of the LGBT community. This art brings a lot of revenue and patrons for the city who inhabit our venues, bars, galleries, restaurants, and shops. I chose to make Hamtramck my home for the last five years and I feel at home when I see the pride flags along Jose Campo Street and proud to be a part of this place. Again, please don't ban these flags from our public space. It would be a huge disservice to the people who bring a lot of revenue and culture to the city we call home." Justin Viera. "That you are passing this resolution in the middle of Pride Month when LGBTQIA+ flags are overwhelmingly flown and in which the Hamtramck Council has declined and, declined to and resisted officially flying any pride flags or making any statement of support speaks volumes. The community will see this for what it is, a coward display in our refusal to stand in support of those in our community who are most vulnerable especially in these times. The Council is choosing to tolerate and in effect help cultivate objective intolerance of LGBTQ individuals and as Karl Popper has taught us, this is a deplorable action." Jason Portier. "Word it any way you want, the anti-pride flag resolution is repressive, period. Homophobic, bigoted, outdated, disgraceful." Ashley Hughes. "Please do not make it legal to fly pride flags on public property. This resolution is absolutely the cowardly thing to do. All it does is suppress the voice of the LGBT+ community, a group of people that is already under attack from so many other places. Don't be another area of suppression and hate. I implore you to think about your own identities and what it would feel like for you if you were in the shoes of the LGBTE+ community. Don't be in the wrong side of history. Don't support the hate. Stand up to the hate. Stand up to the bullies. Be brave. Thanks." Greg Tilly. "I'm not going to address you with respectful title because you and your local authoritative community have felt the need to diminish others with the, with your ideologies. I've long been a prominent and champion of the Middle Eastern community, proponent and champion of the Middle Eastern community in the Detroit area. My wife's family is Lebanese and now so are my children. I've been exposed to many great things as a result of different cultures coming together with mutual respect. So why, I ask myself, would your local government look to destroy that mutual respect? Make no mistake, you're afforded respect in this country only when you give it. Your community has been given a great deal of respect locally. Don't make the mistake of thinking people tolerate collective intolerance based on some disgusting religious basis. It's a lack of respect in most cases. In this case however, it is most incredibly ignorant and 100% stupid. It ruins years of assimilation and creates a divide. I choose to invest a little of my time and money every year attending soccer games and patronize, patronizing other local companies in Hamtramck. I can tell you that those days will be done for me if you choose to ban the pride flag and I'll push to have DCFC leave your town and everything they've brought to the neighborhood. Make the right decision, prove you can do it right by everyone, not just allow this religious zealot." Justin Carver. "I have been a resident of Hamtramck for nearly 10 years. One of the reasons I choose to live here as well as raise my daughter here is because I value the city's vibrance, diversity, and representations of what America is. A melting pot of cultures, creeds, colors, and beliefs. We should embrace freedom of expression so long as it is not hateful and ostracizing. I am very ashamed to see the city I love trying to shut out pride flags due to fear of offending people. I sincerely hope the city reconsiders Hispanic knowledge and the diversity of the city they represent." I take issue, this is from Joseph Strazka. "I take issue with the proposed resolution regarding flying of the flags flown on public property and encourage you to do, to vote no. I take issue with the statement each religious, ethnic, racial, political, or sexual orientation group is already represented by the country it belongs to. This statement is confusing as it is unclear what is meant by represented by the country it belongs to. This is made even more complicated by the addition of the verbiage nations' flags that represent the international character of our city. Is the intent of the Council to limit flags to the 193 countries that are members, member states of the United Nations or does it also include the two non-member observer states of the Holy See and the State of Palestine? As the US doesn't recognize the State of Palestine, would the Council support the flying of the Palestinian flag contrary to the US foreign policy? Then there's an issue, then there's the issue of Taiwan. Taiwan is not recognized as a nation, however, it does have a flag. Does the Council believe that the People's Republic of China adequately represents the people of Taiwan or should the Taiwanese flag be allowed to be flown? If the intent of the Council is to allow a Palestinian or Taiwanese flag to be flown, what is the position of other so-called nations not recognized by the US such as Somalia, Tanzania, Abkhazia? I'm not gonna waste time trying to pronounce these. The second and perhaps more concerning issue is the idea that these groups are represented by the country they belong to. The United States is the leader in promoting the rights of LGBTQ+ people around the world. This is because many countries criminalize homosexual behavior. A list of those countries can be found here, he included a link. In fact, homosexual behavior is 13 of those countries can be punished by death including Saudi Arabia, Yemen, Iran, and Somalia. The execution of homosexuals is a real issue as demonstrated by the estimated over 7,000 people executed in Iran who were suspected of being homosexual as well as reports of suspected homosexuals thrown off of rooftops to their deaths in Syria. Given these facts, I do not think that homosexual minorities are adequately represented in the countries they belong to nor do I think the Council does either. I understand that flying flags representing minority groups can lead to uncomfortable conversations for everyone involved. Given the treatment of minority groups around the world, I particularly, particular sexual minorities who are subject to execution, perhaps these uncomfortable conversations need to be had and the flying of flags representing those groups will facilitate those conversations. I would like to end by stating Hamtramck is a great community and has always welcomed the disenfranchised. This live and, this live and let live attitude is one of the reasons Hamtramck survives today while the surrounding communities have struggled. Resolutions of this nature regarding the flying of public flags do nothing to advance the issues that really matter to residents such as crime, speeding, litter, and roads. Those issues would only be solved by residents working together, not by pitting groups against each other, by poorly wording resolutions regarding the flying of flags. I strongly encourage the Council to reject this resolution and concentrate on issues that matter most to us residents. Sincerely, Joseph." Hi, my name is Ahmed Ali, living on Home Street. "First and important note, I would like to, I would also like to inform you that many of the email comments that you get and read from the emails are from those living outside of the city. We saw a few campaigns from the opposition to get their allies to send comments when they don't even live here. I'm writing this to inform my support for Resolution 2382 to maintain and conform the neutrality of the city of Hamtramck towards its residents. I would like to thank Councilman Hassan, the rest of the council members, and the mayor on getting this done. The city should not be in position to pick sides of flags besides the US state, city, country flags on government property. Please listen to the people who actually show up to the meetings and are part of the community, not those who live outside of it. Thank you." Kelsey Dravinsky. "I'm writing to submit my opinion on the resolution that will be voted on tonight to maintain the neutrality and confirm the neutrality of the city of Hamtramck towards its residents. As a resident and voter, I oppose the resolution. I presume the resolution would prevent the city from flying the pride flag at City Hall. I understand the language of the resolution aims to prevent radical or racist flags to be flown, but the city ultimately has the choice in the matter and this isn't the case of a slippery slope situation. The pride flag is more than just a flag for the LGBT community. It's a symbol that the city welcomes and is a place of safety for all people. By removing the flag, the city is making a choice against that representation." Thank you. Kira Thomas. "I live on Norwalk Street and I do not agree with banning the pride flag especially during the month of Pride. All should be accepted everywhere and always." Alex Meyer. "I am Alex, my family's Polish-American and has lived in Detroit and Hamtramck since the 1930s. Hamtramck has always been an oasis of multiculturalism in the metro area. This resolution is a threat to the multiculturalism that makes Hamtramck a role model for other cities across the nation. LGBTQ people not only are part of their, are part of every immigrant and ethnic community but offer distinct cultural contributions to our communities as well particularly in the arts, health field, and education. This resolution is divisive at a time when our communities are under real threats like austerity, budgeting, gun violence, and a cost of living crisis. It does not demonstrate respect for the inherent dignity of all people. Objectifies LGBTQ people and pretends that a rainbow flag stands for only, stands only for sex when it symbolizes, when it is a symbol of cultural resilience, resistance to the state violence, and a recognition of a community's history. Please vote no for this resolution. It is a threat to the multiculturalism and love across the borders that makes Hamtramck a great American city." Christina Toscano. "As a Hamtramck resident since 2017, I have always loved the city and celebrated its true diversity unlike anywhere I've ever lived. Until, only until recently do I feel homophobia and disrespect seeping into local government under the guise of respecting diversity and religious differences. Is respect only allowed for the citizens who hold the majority? The emboldened disrespect to the LGBT+ community who don't conform to the majority of citizens' religious beliefs is outstanding hypocrisy. Considering those same people stood alongside the religious majority to empower their beliefs not long ago. I would hate to see the city I once dearly enjoyed nationally embarrass itself in the eyes of Michigan and the United States because of its hypocritical lack of empathy in respect to the diversity it's known for. Do better for all citizens, not just the majority." Elizabeth Stapleton. "I am a Hamtramck resident and a member of the LGBTQ+ community. It is beyond offensive that the mayor and city council compared the pride flag to Nazi and white supremacists. The pride flag is a symbol of our existence and the love that we have for our community. The resolution proposal says that we will be represented by our country, however, currently in the USA, state governments are trying to oppress the transgender members of our community more than ever. The effect of these actions and the message they send has caused the murder rate of transgender people to double. The USA flag does not represent me as a queer person because a large part of the USA hates and wants to oppress my existence. It saddens me to learn that Hamtramck, my home, is a part of that group. Please do not pass this resolution as it sends a message of hate and oppression to our LGBTQ residents." George Elkind. "As a longtime Hamtramck resident, homeowner of the area, and advisory member of the city's Arts and Culture Commission, I'd like to register my opposition to the passage of Resolution 2382. While talking around what explicitly it seeks to ban, the resolution clearly aims to remove any existing signs of LGBTQ+ support on city property while suggesting that such affirmative displays are aligned with radical racist sentiments. This could not be further from the truth treating LGBT+ rights as a subject fit for reasonable debate itself, a reactionary regressive position. And removing flags and pride displays in private businesses and public spaces has been a project of right-wing racist and anti-immigrant activists throughout the past year. This move will only embolden them to demand more. This alignment of anti-LGBTQ+ with conservative forces is not a coincidence. All those who attack or erase the needs and rights of society's most valuable are taking a part in the, in the same regressive project. Not flying a flag again over City Hall is one thing, but banning such displays going forward is entirely different matter, matter and one which may fly legally afoul of the state's recent amendment to ELCP. At present, LGBT+ rights across the country are under attack and flags on private property, even with Hamtramck, have been met with targeted acts of vandalism. LGBT+ rights are far from safe in Michigan and with Hamtramck and to, and within Hamtramck and to suggest this proposition is neutral is to promulgate any absolutely flagrant falsehood. By no stretch are members of the community covered by state, national, or other flags. This variety of representation is and remains important in making our city and world more accepting, free, free environments. Please do not take this step to make Hamtramck a more reactionary, less tolerant, and deeply divided place. It accomplishes nothing will result in harm to members of our community. A community made up of diverse people, council, city, council, mayor, and city of Hamtramck are all meant and I'd argue bound to serve. Sincerely, George." Elizabeth Allen. "My name is Elizabeth Allen and I thought I am, and although I'm not a resident of Hamtramck, I spend a great deal of time and money on local Hamtramck businesses and events. And proposed resolution to limit flags flown on public properties is a clear and obvious violation of free speech. The resolution's assertion that it does not violate the free speech of individuals, of businesses, and the city is false, damaging and frankly insulting to intelligence of the residents and participants in the community. The assertion that each religious, ethnic, racial, political, and sexual-oriented group is already represented by the country it belongs to is also demonstrably false in an era where governing entities are actively attempting to legislate marginalized groups out of existence. The increase in hate speech and anti-LGBTQ+ sentiments both in Hamtramck and across the nation make community organizing and solidarity vital to the continued existence of marginalized community members, many of whom are deeply involved in the betterment of Hamtramck. And flags are an important visible marker of that solidarity. Erasing the visibility of Hamtramck's queer community will only embolden those who seek to erase us from existence. Hamtramck's strength lies in its diversity of residents and community participants as it clear from the resolution allowance towards the international character of the city. The city of Hamtramck exists to support its constituents and any celebration of the diversity of the city will ring hollow of its residents if its residents are reduced only to their countries of origin. Given that the mandate of the city government is to support the safety and well-being of its citizens, the government of Hamtramck would do far better to alert residents of actual impending threats such as the recent incinerator implosion than spending their taxpayer-funded time attempting to police their community through unconstitutional resolutions. Thank you for your time." Gordon Widener. "Hamtramck's best aspect is the open arms with which it welcomes the world. Adopting this resolution would signal that our city is now against its history, only interested in supporting some of its residents instead of all, only interested in some of its visitors instead of all, and actively discouraging businesses from taking place in the city. Make no mistake, all flags are political. Whether the US flag, other nations' flags, and state flags, all of these have something to say. With the resolution as presented, you have the chance to define what the city flag also stands for. It is a commitment to accepting all of your residents and visitors and their contributions to our community. If that most American of, if that most American of ideals is what you wish to affirm, you cannot in good conscience support this resolution. Thank you." Mark Navarro. "I'm writing today in opposition of Resolution 2382 for the city of Hamtramck which would ban the flying of non-national flags from Hamtramck city property. The fact that the resolution is even consideration is a disgrace to the welcoming community that Hamtramck is. Hamtramck is one of the most diverse cities in Michigan and that diversity extends beyond national origin. People from all different gender identities and sexual orientations call Hamtramck home or find refuge in community in Hamtramck where they are accepted, loved, and cared for by residents, businesses, and organizations alike. By not allowing pride flags to fly on the city property is a direct message to those groups that the city government undermines their presence. While not a resident of Hamtramck, I spend a great deal of time, money in the city. I have seen a vast number of local businesses be accepting and welcoming to all members of the LGBTQ+ community. Even walking down the street, I see pride flags proudly displayed from homes, businesses, and other institutions. For the city government to not participate in showing love and humanity to the LGBTQ+ community would be shameful and against the rich diversity of Hamtramck. June is LGBTQ+ Pride Month, a time when members of the community are uplifted, celebrated, and honored. But this year, pride takes on a deeper meaning as anti-queer and anti-trans legislation is passed nationwide, sending the message to the LGBTQ+ community that they are not wanted or welcomed in certain parts of the country by outright banning pride flags on city property. The city is sending a similar message to the LGBTQ+ community in and around Hamtramck. At a time when LGBTQ+ people fear for their lives and their safety, Hamtramck should show they are welcome in the community by actively and openly banning flying pride[1764.92] flags on our city property, you would be sending the opposite message. I hope the council will do the right thing and vote this resolution down. It is a disgrace to the diversity, community, and reputation of Hamtramck. At a time when queer and trans people are under attack in this country, Hamtramck should be loudly and proudly showing that members of the LGBTQ+ community are loved and welcomed in the city, in our -- in the city. Be the neighbors, friends, business owners, or patrons, or anyone else looking to find a home and a community in Hamtramck. Best, Mark Navarro. Sam Griffin. I'd like to comment on the resolution banning the -- to ban the flying of pride flags on public property in Hamtramck, which I find to be incredibly disheartening. The case for pride flags is made in the first line of the resolution. Quote, "The city of Hamtramck is one of the most diverse cities in the United States in which we should proudly promote its diversity," end quote. LGBTQ+ people are not only a part of the diversity, their contributions to our city are something to be proud of, too. And then second quote, "Whereas each religious, ethnic, racial, political, or sexual orientation group is already represented by the country it belongs to," is patently false. According to this study, Yemen is one of the most unsafe countries for LGBTQ travelers because homosexual activity is punishable by lashes and years in jail. LGBTQ+ Yemenis are not represented by their government. Additionally, anti-LGBTQ+ legislation has been passed recently in Poland and Hungary as part of the wider anti-gay movement in Eastern Europe. Therefore, queer people from the two most prominent nationalities in Hamtramck are potentially safer here in Hamtramck than they are in the countries where their families immigrated from. Sadly, that does not mean that they are welcome here in the United States, where the Human Rights Campaign has recently released a warning and a guidebook on staying safe in the USA as a LGBTQ person. In a climate where hostility toward a group is the norm, neutrality towards that position only serves as a cosigning of the ongoing violence and oppression. Does Hamtramck wish to participate in this trend of alienating, threatening, and punishing members of the LGBTQ+ community? Or does it wish to embrace our diversity as touted in our motto, "The word, the world in two square miles"? The world has always and always will include queer people. So let's please allow those here who wish to assert that LGBTQ+ people are welcome here to do so. This is not a radical stance, it's simply one of the -- one of acceptance, which fits in so well with our identity as Hamtramckans. Thank you. Sincerely, Samantha Griffin. Paul Wesbicki. I would like to have this -- please see below text. Esteemed members of the city council and members of the community, I write to you today to address Resolution 2382 and advocate for an inclusive and welcoming environment for all residents of the state of Hamtramck, of the city of Hamtramck. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge and appreciate the city of Hamtramck for its rich diversity. The community is a tapestry of different cultures, religions, ethnicities, and identities, and it is something we should be proud of. Embracing this diversity not only strengthens the fabric of our city, but also showcases our commitment to equity and fairness. However, I must express my concerns regarding the limitations set forth in this resolution. While I understand the intent behind this resolution, there is a clear difference between intent and the impact of this policy. I believe it is crucial to emphasize the importance of visibility and representation at the community level. Our city should be a place where everyone feels seen, valued, and heard. These qualities are what vibrant and successful communities are based upon. A forementioned value can have a positive effect on community members' mental health throughout inclusivity and empowerment. By limiting the display of flags to only the American flag and those representing the international character of our city, we need inadvertently silence of voices and experience of certain groups within our community, which research demonstrates is detrimental to mental health as well as community engagement. Frankly, people do not want to contribute or be seen in places where they are silenced and feel discriminated against. We must remember that visibility matters. For many individuals, especially from those marginalized communities, seeing symbols that represent their identity can be incredibly empowering. It sends a message of acceptance and inclusion, fostering a sense of belonging and pride. By allowing flags that represent various religious, ethnic, racial, political, and sexual orientation groups to be flown on our public properties, we demonstrate our commitment to embracing the diverse identity of our residents. Furthermore, this resolution should not be seen as opening the door for radical or racist groups. We can establish clear guidelines and criteria for the flags that can be displayed, ensuring that they align with our community values of inclusivity, respect, and nondiscrimination. By actively engaging with our residents and seeking their input, we can create a framework that celebrates diversity while guarding against any potential misuse of this privilege. While it may be uncomfortable for some residents to view a pride flag, silencing voices of marginalized and oppressed communities is detrimental and fundamentally unsafe. There is a course of separation between church and state that along with the recent amendment to the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act guarantee, many minority people population rights in Michigan. While this resolution does not perhaps violate the letter of the law, it certainly impedes on the spirit of it. Let us be a city that takes a stand for equity, not just the words from -- not just in words through our actions. Equality by itself does not alone produce progress. It is each according to their need and in time of history where LGBT members are being actively oppressed and need for visibility and paramount. By allowing the display of flags representing different religious, ethnic, racial, political, and sexual orientation groups, we send a powerful message of unity and support. Couple sentences I can't read, read alternate format. By -- yeah, let us be -- by allowing the display of flags representing different religious, ethnic, racial, political, and sexual orientation groups, we send powerful message of unity, support. We become a city where all individuals, regardless of their background, can feel proud of their identity and confident in their place within our community. Together, let us choose a path that celebrates the beauty of diversity, promotes visibility, and prioritizes representation at a community level. By doing so, we create a city that is not only welcoming, but also serves as a shining example of progress and exclusivity. Tammy Borck. It is with deep feeling that I come on grown adult behaviors, people serving in positions of power in your neighborhood hub. I stress the word "serve." As a business owner in Detroit, I'm embarrassed of such terrifying politics and policymaking with glaring signs of Hitler-era thinking and acting. It changes my view on doing business in Hamtramck, where the patron of your local businesses. This radical decision affects absolutely everyone's family, everyone's friends, everyone's colleagues, everyone. Tammy Borck. Dr. Vitas Malas. I think that's how you pronounce it, I apologize. I'm writing out of concern regarding a recent Hamtramck city resolution seeking to ban the flying of a pride flag of international -- for international display. Upfront, I will acknowledge that I am not a resident of the city of Hamtramck. I am a Michigan native living in Florida who regularly visits -- regular vacations in the Detroit area. Hamtramck is a must-visit destination for me for excellent culture and nightlife. I am an ardent DCFC supporter, and my match day experience always involves a leisurely day spent visiting Hamtramck business and spending time with the city's residents. To put it simply, Hamtramck is one of my favorite places on earth. But it is one of my favorite places because it is a spirit of openness and inclusion. I've heard the argument that allowing the pride flag will somehow open the floodgates for all sorts of other flags to be flown. I would put that this is where the city can take a stand, to embrace the paradox of tolerance, let love win the day, and to make clear that banners celebrating love, inclusion, equity, and diversity will be allowed while those imposing, espousing contrary values, hate, oppression, and inclusion will be banned. The opportunity to demonstrate that Hamtramck is a city of full of love, a city so full of love that it has no room for hate, I ask that you please allow the pride flag to be flown without restrictions to let those most in need of welcome know that they have a home in Hamtramck. Thank you. Elizabeth Sarah. I am an active member of the Planet Community and frequent Hamtramck on a regular basis. I love the diversity and welcoming nature of Hamtramck. Banning the pride flag would be a colossal mistake, going against the very nature of what the city stands for, acceptance, diversity, community. It would send a message to both Hamtramck residents and visitors that discrimination is praised when really it should be reprimanded. What do you want Hamtramck to stand for? Veronica Sawyer. I am writing to express my opinion on Resolution 2382. The city should allow the pride flag to be flown on public property. Firstly, with the passing of the resolution, the city would be opening itself up to potential First Amendment violations and thus challenges to said resolution. I highly doubt that the city of Hamtramck, its residents, or its businesses want the negative publicity and costs associated with that potential controversy. But more importantly, I think that banning the flag would be very hypocritical on the part of Hamtramck, not to mention that it sends a decidedly non-inclusive message to a significant number of the city's residents and frequent visitors. If Hamtramck truly values its diversity, then permitting the display of pride flags on public property is a no-brainer. On the other hand, if the city and its loudest voices are truly committed to banning the flag display, then no reasonable person will consider Hamtramck a truly inclusive city. This issue is personal to me. Although I'm not a resident of Hamtramck, I do visit the city frequently, approximately once a week. In the past, I have worked in the city, but if Hamtramck decides to ban the pride flag, I'm going to reconsider those visits, the money I spend in the city, and the good words for Hamtramck regularly express. I would hate to think I've missed -- I've been misled all these years by empty rhetoric about the city's commitment to diversity. Thank you for your time and attention. Veronica Sawyer. Jackson Boyd. As a resident of Hamtramck, I'm emailing to let you know that I wholeheartedly disagree with the banning of the pride flag on city property. It goes against the ethos of what Hamtramck stands for. Everyone is welcome, no matter where you come from or what your background is. Thank you for your time, Jackson Boyd. Sean Mann. Please find and attach a letter, humbly submitting in regards to proposed -- I think he had a letter. I'll look it up. I don't know if there was an attachment to that email. I think I've gone through a lot of them, though. I'm okay for now. I'm okay for now. Who's saying that's enough? Huh? Everybody's saying if it was your comment, you wouldn't say it was enough. Five-minute break? Okay.
Yes, I am good. All right, everybody, we're starting again, so just if you can please.
This is from Sean Mann. Detroit City Football Club has had the honor and privilege of being a part of Hamtramck since 2015 when we announced our campaign to save and rehab historic Key Worth Stadium. We've been proud to host our matches in Hamtramck over the years because it's a city that lives our values as a tight-knit community, that is diverse, welcoming, historic, authentic, dense, and small businesses oriented. We consider it an honor to showcase Hamtramck to the southeast Michigan region, the entire nation, and the broader world. In 2022 alone, we brought over 120,000 visitors to Hamtramck, and another 1 million fans across our regional and national broadcasts watch games from Key Worth from the comfort of their homes. Celebrating diversity and being welcoming to -- welcoming is core to our organization's values and are increasingly recognized as crucial characteristics of a thriving economy. Leading business organizations like the Detroit Regional Chamber of Commerce and business leaders from Michigan recognize and openly advocate that being a welcoming, inclusive place for immigrants and LGBTQ+ and other diverse communities are fundamental to our region's economic success in the 21st century. Has the attacks on the First Amendment in public spaces with the intent of further marginalizing already marginalized members of our community, in particular, the LGBTQ+ community, not only undermines our common humanity, but go against the values of diversity that have defined Hamtramck for generations and makes Hamtramck a less desirable location for investment. As a proud member of the Hamtramck business community, would respectfully ask the body to reconsider any measures that try to minimize members of this community instead of celebrating them and their contributions. Thank you for your time and service. Sean Mann, co-owner, CEO. Valerie Stevens. Hello, I'm Hamtramck resident. I own and live in a home on Yeman Street with my husband and our children. This resolution is blatantly homophobic and disgusting. The media has been notified and Hamtramck will be viewed as oppressive and potentially dangerous for LGBTQIA, rather than the welcoming multicultural community I knew it to be. I will never vote to support any council members who support this resolution, and I know I'm not alone. These council members should be ashamed. Thank you, Valerie Stevens. My name is Teresa Anasti. I am a current resident of Hamtramck on Norwalk Street. I'm also a social work professor at Oakland Community, who lives in Hamtramck with my partner and my two-year-old daughter. I moved here from Chicago, thinking that I was moving to a progressive, diverse city that shares similar values that I do. I love the fact that I can hear church bells in the Islam cult parade in the same city. I love the churches, I love the mosques, I love the coffee shops, I love the Polish and Yemeni restaurants. I'm writing to tell you that I strongly support flying the pride flag in our international display, considering Hamtramck's commitment to diversity and equity. Banning the pride flag is short-sighted and sends a message to the rest of the country that we are a bigoted city. Indeed, if Detroit can fly the pride flag, then so should we. To the response that if someone wants to fly a Nazi flag, the pride flag stands for inclusion and acceptance and not hatred and white supremacy. The pride flag was created in 1978 by a US veteran to promote pride within the gay, now called LGBTQ+ community. There is no hatred embedded in this symbol, which shows love for our LGBTQ+ family. To be honest, if we ban this flag from the display, the Hamtramck will likely make national news and have a reputation as being backwards and intolerant, and mocked on social media many times over. I assume the city wants more people moving to the city to attract business and tax revenue. Most cities do. Banning the pride flag would send the opposite message to potential new residents, that this is a community of intolerance and hate. Thank you for your time, Teresa. Julia Sosin. Home Street, Hamtramck. I would like to leave the following public comment for today's council meeting. I urge council to vote no on Resolution 2382, which is in current language, would prohibit the flying of the pride flag, as well as the historical flown Cherokee Nation and American African Union flags on city flag poles. As a Hamtramck resident, seeing the pride flag be allowed on city property is particularly important to me. The pride flag does not show preference for any certain sexual orientation, but rather inclusion of all sexual orientations. It signifies to the -- it signifies to the significant population of queer people and their allies who live, work, shop, and volunteer here that they are just as welcome as non-queer people. Refusing to fly the flag in a political climate of homophobia and transphobia gives the opposite message. There is no neutrality. Regardless of what kind of personal bias you may have against queer people, I invite you to think about the economic benefits of inclusion, as well as the importance of coalition building and fighting oppression and uplifting the variety of civil rights. Julia Sosin. Marcus Merritt. I'm writing as a citizen and resident of Hamtramck to voice my strongest possible objection to Resolution 2382. Contrary to the stated aims of the resolution to promote and embrace diversity, passing a resolution intended to restrict the pride flag from display on the city flag pole would announce that Hamtramck considers LGBTQ community to be extremist and shameful. It would send a message to the LGBTQ residents of Hamtramck that the city government does not consider them welcome here. Municipal display of the pride flag is incredibly common everywhere around here, and people understand this display of the pride flag to symbolize that the community accepts and supports the LGBTQ community. This weekend, I drove to Minnesota and back, and I noticed the pride flag was flown at all of the rest areas along the way. No one is worried that the pride flags in the rest stops are going to open the door for radical or racist groups to ask for flags to be flown. It's absurd. A great deal of Hamtramck's vibrance is down to the community's acceptance of and celebration of the LGBTQ community. But if this resolution were to pass, Hamtramck would stand out as expressly and uniquely hostile to the LGBTQ community. The citizens of Hamtramck do not want this resolution to be passed. Sincerely, Marcus Merritt. Courtney Blom. To the Hamtramck City Council with regard to the proposal to ban the pride flag from public property, never did I think that I would need to explain the importance of the pride flag to citizens of Hamtramck, and yet, here I am. My name is Courtney Blom. I am the mother of a 10-year-old daughter who recently came out as lesbian, with our entire family's wholehearted support. As much as I wish that the entire world would look upon my daughter with the same acceptance and admiration that we have for her, we all know that this is not reality of 2023 in America. Having read the proposal, you cannot with a straight face argue that all minorities are equally represented and supported by flying their flags country. My daughter and the rest of the LGBTQIA community are unequivocally not represented by the American flag, when there are several states within the Union that are trying to legislate them out of the -- out of support, out of crucial Medicare care, and frankly out of existence. There have been over 520 anti-LGBTQIA bills proposed to an state legislator this year alone. We are only halfway through the year. If you need any further reminder of how real and violent hate against LGBTQIA+ community still is, this meeting tonight is occurring the day after the University of the Pulse nightclub massacre. When even the White House is flying the pride flag to show solidarity while the country tears into the LGBTQIA+ community, I do not think the president would agree with council's proposal that everyone is equally represented under the American flag. Saying that you want to ban the pride flag because you're too afraid to stand up for white -- to white supremacy or other radical groups who may demand a flag be flown is a piss-poor excuse. And if you are too cowardly to say no to extremists, then you have no business running the city or composing its legislation. Do better. This community deserves better from you, a city that deserves to be on the right side of history. John Salvage. Hello, my name is John Salvage. I have been a resident of Hamtramck since May of 2013. In these past 10 years, I have been both happy and proud to claim Hamtramck as my home. Is with great regret that I feel shame for this town I love so much due to Resolution 2382, which is unquestionably a veiled attack of discrimination against our LGBTQ+ residents. What twists the knife even deeper in this attack is that it is these residents, ones that experience prejudice and hate consistently in their own lives, who have raised and continue to raise their voices so loudly against Islamophobia over the years to help their Muslim brothers and sisters to feel safe, secure, and welcome in their migration to Hamtramck. To each city council member who votes yes on Resolution 2382, you know that this is an act of utter betrayal and hypocrisy, an act that actually defines sinful behavior in complete contrast to the celebration of diversity and inclusion that the pride flag beautifully represents. Francisco Olivero. I'm writing to this to let you -- let whoever know that I wish to petition the banning of the business pride flags. Amy Nicole. I am part of the LGBTQ community. I spend quite a bit of time in Hamtramck. I frequent your restaurants. I worked in one of your dispensaries. I bring people in when I throw events at the local art gallery. I promote bands who play on the sanctuary with my magazine. I promote the events at the New Dodge to my Instagram audience. Shared the attendance shows at Smalls. Hell, I even went to the DCFC game just to support the city and documented when Weta Co. painted that mural to promote them. We are a big part of your community, whether we live there or not, and it is not a crime to love who you love. With your stance in not hanging a pride flag, not only is it a coward's move, the fear of upsetting a few sidelines, those who continue to be marginalized and put in danger, but it's also a signal from our office and its elected, key word, elected officials that you choose to disregard us. And in doing so, prove to us that you don't want to cheer, respect, or protect our community, even when you were a big part of yours. If our community cannot feel safe within the parameters of your city, why should we bother to pump our hard-working dollars into your institutions? Why should we move to the city, pay taxes to you, when you clearly are taking a stand in how you feel about the collective us? I hope my word makes you understand the severity of this, even if it's just to threaten your bottom line. Do better, Hamtramck. Take a stand for love and protection of people who love your city. And if not, well, we'll go elsewhere. Thank you for your time. Sam Strum. I spend time in Hamtramck roughly every other week as a dedicated supporter of Detroit City FC. This proposal is not only a clear violation of the First Amendment, but even being put forth on the table is a blow to many of the closest friends who also love the city. People who have been coming to Hamtramck for years, spending time in the community, spending their money at your businesses. People who have stood against the hate groups your bill claims to be bulwark against. We have long said that the Hamtramck is a diverse city that stands for inclusion and that they love. This proposal will not withstand challenge in the courts. This proposal will only hurt those who have fallen in love with Hamtramck and drive them further from feeling safe there. I urge you to reconsider, vote no on this proposal, and stand for the diversity it claims to represent. Help my friends to continue to feel safe in Hamtramck and keep the love they've had for this wonderful city. Respectfully, Sam. Amanda Jakowski. Hi, everyone. Amanda J., Hamtramck resident. Everything on this agenda at least makes sense. Yay, street sweepers. Except for Resolution 2382. I highly suggest postponing this vote to evaluate how far-reaching this resolution effect would be. I fear passing this would be counterproductive to the stated goal and would squash any uniqueness and diversity that we have fostered over the decades in this city. Does this mean no Christmas or Eid decorations could be displayed by the DDA during holidays? Does this mean no more parking, special parking during the holidays? An area where Hamtramck has recently made steps to be inclusive, but still provides special treatment to Christian and Muslim holidays? Is racial, including Black Americans, who do not always know their country or origin because they were stolen from there? And the people indigenous to the area, including in racial or ethnic? Or would they be considered a nation? Would this resolution have prohibited last year's beautiful rededication of the colonial Hamtramck grave site? There were many more flags that are specific in this document on display there. Furthermore, are you saying that you are going to monitor employees' cell phone and social media use while at work? Who would be responsible for determining and monitoring the protected time, manner, and place? I do note that attention was paid to early social media commentary as the updated version posted on 6/12 reflects many of those issues. But there is far too many questions to pass this today with any semblance of responsibility. Thank you for listening. Claire Nawach Boyd. I am a Hamtramck resident adding my voice to the many saying we strongly support flying the pride flag in public space in our town. At this point, you drag up this hateful debate every single year, spending the city's time and resources on your personal homophobia. It's clear the people of Hamtramck want to fly the pride flag. Our city wants to show our beautiful colors, but it seems like it's our electeds who are showing your true colors instead. Not a good look. Alonso Rubio. As a frequent visitor and nearby resident to the great city of Hamtramck, I am deeply saddened and disappointed that decisions to ban the pride flag are in discussion. A flag which represents peace, harmony, and solidarity amongst people within our own community. A flag that deserves every way to be waved high and mighty over a city that is proud and known for its diversity. I hope that the city council person that reads this will find peace and love in their hearts and choose not to close off a community that has helped and will continue to help the city of Hamtramck grow and prosper. Jo Higgins. I'm someone who grew up in this area, and I'm now raising two children of my own. It has come to my attention that a misguided attempt to patriotism has been proposed as course of action to the great city of Hamtramck. A proposal that, while purportedly celebrating the diversity and representation within the city of Hamtramck and the entire nation, would proceed to infringe or disregard the freedom of expression belonging to those citizens and residents. The United States government has protected the rights of all people to freely express their beliefs and opinions in peaceful methods, including banners, symbols, and flags. Your beliefs, opinions, and how you choose to live your life are protected along with your rights to assemble and associate with many other people. While better legal scholars than I might be able to find a way wherein it is legal that the city of Hamtramck may ban certain symbols or flags, even that they have to admit that doing so is in spite of the spirit of the law. The rationale that this motion is an attempt to circumvent any hateful group from attempting to display any flag of their own brings to mind old quotes from legal scholars and Supreme Court justices about the price of a free society. This motion frankly feels un-American because it reads as a craven attempt to censor free speech and undermine one of the greatest strengths of our shared American culture. The context of this motion causes it to feel as a reactionary attempt to ban the LGBTQ+ flag or similar flags with broad strokes under the guise of protecting the public from hate groups, which would be both disingenuous and cowardly. The LGBTQ+ flag on display only expresses that everyone has the right to feel comfortable in their own skin and has the freedom to love and form relationships with other people. That's it. There has lately been an abundance of bad faith arguing that those opposing the LGBTQ+ community are doing so to protect their children. To address that, I will speak as a proud father of two kids. My oldest had recently finished the fourth grade, and like many kids that age, started developing her first crush. She quickly realized her crush was on another girl in her class. Jury is still out on the boys. She sees that flag as a positive thing in her life because it reminds her she is not alone in the world of feeling how she does. Any harm to children does not derive from that flag. Loving and supportive parents or a community that celebrates diversity in the community. This proposal is cowardly, un-American, and should not be passed. Thank you for your time. Julia Salas. I am sending this email for public comment. Hamtramck has always been known as a diverse community that has accepted a variety of cultures through time. It's the world in two square miles. Times change, but the city has always been a place that people from all over the world know. I moved to Hamtramck during the pandemic as part of the Arts and Culture Commission and quickly relocated from Detroit, previously Dearborn, and out of state because of the openness to all cultures and as well as it is important to the city of Hamtramck. And we had a commission surrounding that. A flag representing a huge majority of the world matches us as a city. Hamtramck must look at a reflection of the whole community and provide a safe and thriving space for businesses. I think removing this flag is unnecessary and does not reflect the amazing place that Hamtramck is. Everyone should be proud of who they are, where they come from, and should be safe where they live. Arlo Pickens. Hello, I'm a resident and business owner who is vehemently opposed to this resolution. Were I in town tonight, if I was in town tonight, I would be there to say this personally, but I hope my statement and ones like it are heated. This resolution is backwards, wrong-headed, and bureaucratic governance under the guise of neutrality. I know the mayor's homophobic, transphobic public stance. I watched the rhetoric fly last year when council wanted the pride flag banned from Zussman Park. I see the posts made by city officials on Hamtramck Square. I understand that this resolution has nothing to do whatsoever with a desire for neutrality and everything to do with council members and the mayor's desire to govern the city according to the structures of their religious books. This, as well as their previous stance on this issue, tell the world that Hamtramck is not a place where everyone is welcome, that we do not value all of our citizens, only those that are in majority. Euphemism frequently used to refer to people who want to enact policy along religious guidelines. Honestly, it repulses me that this is even up for discussion. More than 40 years after the Stonewall riots, after decades of hard-earned rights won by the LGBTQ community, our city government now wants to say loud and clear that they are not supported here, that they are not welcome here, that we are more comfortable with them in the closet, being quiet, not making their identity known. This resolution puts us squarely in line with the worst aspect of American culture. We can do much better than this. I've seen city officials repeatedly online referring to LGBTQ community as disgusting, as mentally deficient, accusing them of being predators of children. These are not the messages I want to be seen as representative of the place where I live. It makes me sick. Pride Month is a celebration of inclusivity, but we would do well to remember that the first pride was that MLK referred to as the language of the unheard. Matthew Sapi. I hope this message finds you all well. My name is Matthew. I regularly involve myself in the Hamtramck community and contribute economically to the city on a weekly, daily basis. As an ally to the LGBTQ community, I'm shocked, disgusted, and angered by the resolution that your city council is pursuing. The Resolution 2382 is a legislative example of homophobia directed towards an already marginalized and heavily targeted community. LGBTQ people are represented by the pride flag in the United States, where there are currently 417 anti-LGBTQ state legislation bills being discussed to eliminate their existence. Considering the origins of how this resolution came to light from the LGBTQ pride flag being flown on the city-owned flagpole in Joseph Campo near Carpenter Street, your council is using their power to make this Resolution Number 418. There's no morally acceptable argument that the council can make on how removing the pride flag, which represents love, understanding, and acceptance, is meant to be an inclusive effort. Removing the pride flag is counterintuitive to your efforts to proudly promote and embrace its diversity, as directly stated in both versions of the resolution. This is especially concerning as the author of this resolution, Mayor Amir Galib, dedicated his efforts to drafting this for discussion rather than alerting South and Hamtramck residents about the implosion of the nearby incinerator, in addition to the extremely bad AQI from the Canadian wildfires. This resolution is far more than whether or not we can fly a certain flag in Hamtramck. Should this pass, this will demonstrate LGBTQ individuals will no longer be supported and loved by the community. It will show we do not care about the unity in Hamtramck, and we would rather appeal to radical and racist minorities who do not promote positive decorum or value the presence of those different than themselves in our city. It will show that we do not welcome people who are different and that will impact everyone. Every human being, regardless of race, creed, ethnicity, political belief, and in this case, sexuality, deserves to feel safe whether they live in occupied space. The Hamtramck City Council is not fooling anyone by marketing this resolution as a path to peace in our community. Peace requires understanding and acceptance, and they are doing neither by removing LGBTQ flags. By passing this proposal, you don't need to open the door for radical racist groups. They are already here, and they will have received exactly what they wanted by denying everyone else the right to feel safe and accepted in Hamtramck through the resolution. Stop this blatant violation of First Amendment rights immediately. The opportunity exists here to ensure that Hamtramck remains a welcoming and open place for all people, and I expect Hamtramck City Council to recognize this. Thank you for taking time to read this and your consideration. Martha Mazarigos. I am against the vote to suppress LGBTQ+ community voices. Do not pass this vote to forbid pride flags from being displayed on public property. This is unfair for the voices of this group under attack. Adina Schechter. As a resident of Detroit and someone who is frequent visitor and love of Hamtramck, I am shocked at Resolution 2382 that seeks to not allow LGBTQIA+ flags to be flown on the city properties. When I read that the city does not want to open the door for radical racist groups to ask for their flags to be flown, I couldn't believe my eyes. The queer community represents love, unity, acceptance, and justice. Allowing our flag to be flown is a statement of all of those values. I find it appalling that flying the LGBT flag, a symbol of love, would ever be considered a gateway to giving radical and racist ideologies they see on the table. As a Jewish person, I have to imagine that if the city was asked to fly a Nazi flag, the answer would be unequivocal and resounding, "No." Flying a flag of love did not open the door of hatred if you do not allow it to. To be neutral is to be complacent to the erasure of queer people from the public eye and public spaces. This is exactly what the bigots want. I feel compelled to speak out against the idea that neutrality is the best opinion when faced with the choice to celebrate a marginalized community that is quite literally in danger from violent legislation on the local, state, and federal level. I urge the city council to stand with LGBTQIA+ community. Do not allow the intimidation tactics of vandalism and violence make us cower to in fear. Now is the time to stand up and support each other. Thank you for your time and consideration. Adina Schechter. Claire Nawach Boyd. As a Hamtramck resident, I do not support HPD acquiring tasers. Tasers are preferable to the use of guns, but I'd rather see us spending resources on something other than weapons, especially given the history of one HPD officer tasing another. Let's prioritize less weapons for our police. Cameron Frank. The most beautiful part of Hamtramck is that it fully embraces the melting pot idea. People from every walk of life are corralled into this two-square-mile city and live side by side in harmony. Churches, mosques, synagogues, bars, Euromats, Yemen cafes, all institutions with different ideas of what is supposed to be right, yet still keeping peace and living amongst their neighbors happily. Why would you want to deny someone their right to fly a flag that says, "I'm here, and I'm proud, and I'm unashamed of it"? It is not unconstitutional. Penelope Bowler. I'm a resident of Hamtramck, and I am opposed to the removal of the pride flag in the city. Hamtramck has a diversity that is unmatched across Michigan. Removal of the pride flag represents a few exceptions that are unfortunately prejudiced. Guys, I'm almost done. Please just bear with me. Removal of the pride flag represents a few exceptions that are unfortunately prejudiced against others who do not share their values. This is the U.S. and the protection of the LGBTQ population. It has been passed in the language of legislation of the Elliott Larson Act. Thank you for your time. Please don't allow the city to be crippled by new lawsuits because of council's actions. Sincerely, Penelope. Below is my personal comment regarding 2382. Hello, I am writing to you today as a member of the non-binary community. Resolution 2382 is in direct opposition to decades of work by individuals of various races and cultures that have come to inhabit and call the land we now live on home. No, I said the land we live on, we now live on. As a member of the non-binary community, I have personally found a lot of comfort and acceptance of my personal identity from a group I did not originally expect, the local and national indigenous tribes. Within many indigenous tribes, people of my identity are widely accepted and often viewed as prominent members of their communities. While I go into each and every of the 40-plus terms that exist in varying tribes, including our local Anishinaabe, I am instead going to use a term "two-spirit." Two-spirit has grown to become a launching point to convey the overarching term of which we may describe as non-binary individuals within indigenous people across the continent, but is not inclusive to gendered identity, is not a radical idea, nor is it new. Tribes across the United States and right here in Michigan have lived with and accepted those of us that do not fit in the modern binary for nearly 1,000 years. If this is a new information to you, a good place for additional research to avoid further missteps is the Indian Health Service website. You can input this URL access, and she gave me the link. Or, I'm sorry, I can't say "she," I'm not sure what the name is. The respect and prominence of two-spirit individuals within indigenous communities reinforced illustrates the needs for representation and celebration of gender-diverse communities in our local government and leadership. Resolution 2382 is contrary to celebrating individuals at a local level and excludes people who hold to realities that existed here long before the city of Hamtramck was established. A resolution targeting the public display and representation of any marginalized community during our most visible and important months of the year is appalling. I, along with many of my peers, have had to remove certain destinations from our future plans for fear of our physical safety, and I do not want to see Hamtramck follow that path. If this resolution passes, Hamtramck loses its ability to claim itself as a diverse city of individuals and will be on a quick path to joining those very destination as unsafe locations to visit or reside in. One final point. Have you thought about the mental health impacts that a resolution like this will have on the community in which it targets? At present, LGBTQ youth are four times more likely to commit suicide due to harassment and stigma placed by actions like this. Have you seriously considered the impact this takes by placing a community driven by love and acceptance? As a hate group comparing it to racist and radical groups, the personal religious views of elected officials in Hamtramck cannot be prioritized over the mental and public safety of the LGBTQ residents. My family has a long history in Hamtramck, and we always were proud of the inclusivity that Hamtramck holds. I boast about the diversity when I am able to and hope that you reject this resolution so that we can continue to have a city that upholds its diversity so that I can continue to be proud of the city. The city deserves better. With empathy and love, Osnar Balder-Son. Jessica Vu. I am writing to express my disagreement in the banning of pride flags on city property. While I'm not a resident of the city, I live in Poltown, Detroit, a mile south of the city, and spend a lot of time there and love the city. I want Hamtramck to be a place where everyone feels safe and welcome to their authentic selves. Please consider the harm that banning pride flags will have on our community. The pride flag represents a beautiful diversity of the city and should be something that is celebrated, not banned. Thank you for your consideration. Okay, so, almost, there's two, there's still two. I still have to, there's two public, come on. Alois?
Eleanor.
I'm sorry. I did that the first time around, too. Eleanor. Three minutes.
Maybe you in the audience have come here. I'll address you then. Maybe you've come here today to share your personal feelings. Maybe you have come here on someone's advice. Some of you maybe believe we have a need to feel victimized. Some of you may believe that the flag's display in and of itself is an act of aggression. The result is the same. Lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals bring a vibrancy and a positivity to this community, and it's crucial, as a community, we celebrate these contributions in the face of discriminatory legislation across this country. These members have helped me find a home here in Hamtramck and a future through Wayne State University. We live in America for its freedoms. I, it follows, I should be free to live the life I choose. The world in these two-square-miles has and will continue to have LGBT residents, whether they come here for the community or come from it. 7.2% of adults are LGBT in some form or another. And although it may be a hard pill for some of you to swallow, statistically, nearly a tenth of you and your loved ones is LGBT in some form or another. I do not wish to spend the next 30 years in a split community trading begrudging stares. I think you know better than to make your home a place of violence and/or distrust of your neighbor. Just outside that door...
Excuse me, ma'am. Over there.
There is a poster just outside this door.
I told you, back it off.
There is a poster hanging from the Hamtramck Historical Commission. It shares the donor was proud to be Polish. The first-listed antonym of pride is shame. Is this a place I should not feel proud to exist? Abu Ahmed, Mohammed, Khalil, Naim, Mahz. I urge you to oppose this shameful resolution. Mohammed, Amir, I urge you to confront whatever hatred has fostered such a shameful proposal.
Vandal, Whitney?
I moved to Hamtramck last year because I was ashamed to live in Michigan City with such a shameful and embarrassing history. If you don't know, Wind Up Michigan is known for being a sundown town. They're called sundowns because it was dangerous for Black and Brown people to be out after dark, or else they would face civilian and police harassment. If we allow Hamtramck, Michigan to adopt a legal standard of bigotry, it's only natural that the queer presence here, your neighbors, are forced out due to hate crimes and police harassment. It's obvious what you're doing, and it's disgusting. In the eyes of the law, I am a transgender woman. In the eyes of many of you in this room right now, I will be never anything more than a gay man. That is fine. I'm not here to tell you what to think, what to do in your spare time. Interfering with clear expression is a violation of our rights. I know the movement to ban pride flags in Hamtramck has been supported by big money interests, some of whom are in this room with me right now. What we lack in funding, we will make up for in perseverance. Anti-gay and anti-trans legislature will not be tolerated in Hamtramck. You want us to leave? Come and make us. We will vote you out before you ever could.
Thank you. Let me just make sure. That's lots of public comment.
Okay, thank you. I would like to get you to get some breaks for reading all this.
It was three hours worth of public comment.
Yes. So, before we move to the next section, I don't think many people sent comments, read the resolution. It's, it's not talking about LGBTQ in any way or form only. It says religious, ethnic, racial, political, or sexual orientation. In this room, I found earlier a person whom I met outside and asked me, I want to raise the flag that says, "La ilaa id Allah Muhammad Rasulullah." There's no God but God. Mohammed is the messenger of God. He belongs to some religious group, and he's already telling me, I want to raise that flag if you raise some group's flag. And I told him, if this resolution passed, you are not going to be allowed to do so. So, we are not targeting one group or another. Those people who accused me of hating them, half of my boards and commissions are either LGBTQ or supporters of LGBTQ. And I know them one by one. Some of them are in this room right now. Some of them were appointed by the former mayor. I never fired anybody who belonged to the LGBTQ, and you can do some research. Even the former mayor herself, I appointed her back in the DDA, and she's the biggest advocate for LGBTQ. So, how are we hating those people? But when some commissions that I appointed are trying to undermine my power and the city council power and violate rules and misinterpret terms, then I think some decision has to be taken to clarify things and to make it clear. Those people who didn't understand this section that says countries, represented by some countries, we're talking about the countries that have immigrants in Hamtramck. For someone to mention Taiwan, Abu Kasa, you know, Burkan Afsu, Muslim people, who cares about these countries? We have no immigrants in this country from these countries. We're talking about countries that have immigrants in this country, and this international flag resolution that was passed in 2013, 102, said it specifically international flags that reflects the international character of the city. Why are we talking about Taiwan or Muslim people or Burkan Afsu? We don't have any residents there. But there's also a violation of that because you have to pay some money to raise your flag on Joseph Campo. Well, I know so many countries here that are not represented by those flags either. We have people from Iraq, the Iraqi flag is not there. We have people from Morocco, Algeria, Mauritania, Somalia, Afghanistan. None of these countries have flags there. Why? Because nobody paid the $300 to raise that flag. So, even that, the Human Relation Commission did not do a good job with that because every country that has residents here should have, you know, the opportunity to raise their flags in Joseph Campo in the month of July only. So, if you don't understand which country, we made it clear at the end, which flag should be allowed? The U.S. flag, city, state, and POW flag. So, are the only ones that should be flown in the city properties. If you have your flag in your own properties, I would defend you. I released a statement to denounce the vandalism that happens to one flag that was thrown in the garbage from a private property. There's nothing that caused any safety issues to the LGBTQ members in the community. We will defend you, we will serve you equally just like anybody else. But why are you acting as a victim if your flag is not flown in the city hall or in the public spaces? That, that shouldn't cause an issue because other groups are acting like victims because they want their flags to be raised there. And like we said, we don't want to open the doors for any other groups who come and ask us for raising flags that you don't like or you may not like, and then we will look, it's going to be like a mess. So, I, I think it's clear by now, and we should move to the next session, which is the...